All right, I call the meeting to order. City Council on June 8th at 7:00 AM. Twenty-four thirty. Call the order, we're going to be able to release this. Budget agents, to the right, in the United States. To the government, which is the same sentence. On the nation, on the other side, there's a liberal state of justice. All right. All right. Seven on two. Going to take the roll call.
Alderman Johnson. Alderman Rol.
Here.
Alderman Carr.
Here.
Alderman McGee. Alderman Farrenwell.
Here.
Alderman Rita.
Here.
Alderman Montoya.
Here.
All right, we have a long. Presentation of general proceedings. We have a motion to approve the minutes from the town. And we also have an assembly. If not the council objects, we can do these together. The motion to approve both the main tenet and the main twenty-three.
I'll make a motion.
Rita, second, Alderman Carr, on the question.
I just have a couple of quick comments. One is just a little housecleaning. My name is misspelled in a couple of places with F-E-H, so if you look for that one, all right. And secondly, I will vote to approve the minutes, kind of reserving the right to not agree with the resolution of the 2021-015 and 2021-016. Re-rolled to the vote, but I'll vote to approve them with that note.
Any other questions?
Alderman Johnson. Alderman Rol.
Aye.
Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman McGee. Alderman Farrenwell.
Aye.
Alderman Rita.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Five ayes.
Thank you. All right, under public comment. Any public comment? Please step up to the podium. State your name and address.
Uh, yeah, Mike Cindy. Is it okay? Mike Cindy, 2539 Oak Street, lifelong resident of Blue Island. And I chose to raise my family here for a couple of reasons. One, I'm proud of the past of Blue Island, but I'm also confident in the future of Blue Island. And as I look at the last couple of city council meetings, I'm a little concerned which way we're headed. I see a lot of bickering and a lot of infighting, and I'm a little concerned about the direction that our city is headed. We have a mayor that was elected overwhelmingly by a majority. We have all the men that won each ward, for the most part by a majority, okay? And I want you guys to work together. Unfortunately, I don't see that in the last few meetings. I see a lot of infighting, people bickering, back and forth. And unfortunately, I'm a little embarrassed of the city when I show that and talk to my friends about that. I'm proud of the past of Blue Island, but I'm concerned about the future because I see a lot of bickering right now, and I'd like you guys to work together to make the best interest of the city of Blue Island. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. We have Alderman Johnson, Alderman McGee entering. Any other public comment? All right, we can move on to old business. A few of these, I'll give a statement in the beginning because we might have to vote some of these down because they were tabled from previous meetings. The first one was not it. It's a resolution 2021-012, resolution consenting to the mayoral appointment of the city attorney. We need a motion to untable this, correct?
Right.
If there's a motion to untable this. Motion by Alderman Rita. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Montoya on the question. Roll call clerk.
Alderman Johnson.
No.
Alderman Rol.
No.
Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
No.
Alderman Farrenwell.
No.
Alderman Rita.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
That's three ayes.
So the motion does not leave table. All right, so number two, we have an ordinance of 2021-013, an ordinance of the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, amending chapter 30, city council, and chapter 31, city officials of Title III administration of the code of Blue Island, Illinois. We need to remove this off table. I've submitted since an amended ordinance that is going to be amended again as we sit here, so I would like this to be voted down. So first, we need to bring it out of table, though. Is there a motion to bring it out of table? Motion by Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman Rol. On the question. Clerk, do the roll.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye, I'm sorry.
Aye. Alderman Rol.
No.
Alderman Carr.
I, I do have a question. Are we voting to take this?
Out of table.
Out of table?
Alderman McGee.
No.
Alderman Farrenwell.
I can, point of order, this is just to untable it. To vote it down, but, or vote it up, it's up to you guys, but this is just to untable it. Aye.
Alderman Rita.
No.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Four ayes.
Carries? So it's untabled? Okay. All right. So it's untabled, I'm going to ask the council to vote this down because I submitted an amended ordinance after this, which will amend, sitting here hopefully. So is there a motion to reject this, this motion? Can I phrase it like that?
Well, we could do a motion to approve and then you vote.
And then reject it. Yes, so we need a motion. Motion is second. Well, does that affect, can a motion to approve and then vote? No?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, all right, so a motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Farrenwell, is there a second? Alderman Montoya?
I'm confused.
So on this one, this is the original ordinance.
Okay.
I've since submitted a new one under new business.
Right.
So I'd like this one voted down just for housekeeping, remove it off the agenda.
Okay, so we're not voting to reject it.
We're voting to reject it.
If it makes it easier, we can do a motion to remove it from the agenda. As opposed to going through the yeses and no's. I make a motion to remove it from the agenda.
All right. Motion made by Alderman Rita, remove from the agenda, is there a second? Alderman Rol, on the question. All right, roll call.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Rol.
Aye.
Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Farrenwell.
Aye.
Alderman Rita.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
So number three doesn't go anywhere because we never approved pre-existing ordinance, so under reported city officials, under the mayor. We have mayor motion to approve payroll for May 31st, 2021, for $330,769.23. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion's made by Alderman Rita, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Carr, on the question.
I have a couple of questions. I wanted to ask, we've got now paychecks for Mr. Petosca and Mr. Wogan, and I just wanted to find out what funds those monies are coming from.
So as of right now, I believe, unless Mr. Petosca, Mr. Wogan want to, Mr. Petosca want to clarify, I believe it's the finance and then municipal underwater and sewer, right?
Correct.
All right, if you want to clarify.
Thank you. Mark Petosca, Director of Finance Administration. For my salary, I am paid directly out of the finance department, and then for the director of municipal services currently, it's paid out of the water department.
Okay, then so those are appropriated funds that are available, correct?
They are funds that are appropriated, yes, not to the full amount.
But how are we covering like this paycheck then?
This is in there, yeah, I asked that.
Yeah, okay, all right. Okay, thank you. And I think that was my questions. Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion, a second. Any other questions? Clerk, do the roll.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Rol.
Aye.
Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Farrenwell.
Aye.
Alderman Rita.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Seven ayes, your honor.
Thank you, motion carries. Number two, we have motion to approve accounts payable for June 8th, 2021, for $485,267.35. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Alderman Rita, is there a second?
No second.
Second by Alderman Montoya, on the question.
I had a question.
Yes.
There's an invoice for Wermer, Rogers, Doran, and Ruson for $34,928.50. I was just curious about what that was for.
So that is our account, and it's one of the issues we need to staff. So, and some of our Aldermen that were here know, we used to have a finance director. Since the finance director resigned months ago, the accounting firm that we have that usually just double-checked what our in-house finance director did, they had to take on that role. So it's one of my positions that we need to post soon, to have somebody in-house again. So that's probably why the bill was higher, am I right, Mr. Petosca? So that's the beneficial to the city is we need to post that position soon so we can fill it. It saves money for the city, and having someone in-house is always a lot easier.
Thank you.
Alderman Farrenwell.
Two questions. One, there's an item here on page three, Andrew Castillo painting City Hall, not to say it doesn't need to be done, but I just, how are we authorizing, how is that money authorized to be spent?
So it's under maintenance, and just for council clarity, I've called four painters before this one had agreed to do it. Glenn Maury, Jimmy Ring, everybody that everybody uses around town here are the ones that are in the book. Nobody was able to do it, everybody short-staffed, and he agreed to do it, and he's from town here and still lives here along with his father and brother. One lives above a hickey funeral home, they're all, they're all Blue Islanders, and I wanted to keep the money in town.
Yeah, I understand, and I will approve it because I do agree it needs to be done.
And just so, the scope of the work was everything when you walk into City Hall, the stairs going up, the trim, the hallways, four or five offices, two hallways. I think that's it? There's a lot of painting and a lot of wallpaper that had to come out.
Yeah, and I just would like to express that I understand why this is being done. I also would like to express that going forward to the extent possible, we'd like to be able to authorize these things in advance, just for the record.
Yes, no problem.
Second thing, on the Ackerman bill, after hearing the discussion with Alderman Johnson last week, I'm going to request that this be removed and it simply not be paid. I was very concerned to learn that Alderman Johnson had requested that he contact a previous city attorney, and he chose not to, and that she may have been able to provide some useful information. So I really think that we've paid him most of the bill, I think that it'd be reasonable to not pay this part of it, and so I'm going to move to exclude this from the payables.
So is there a motion to amend the payables?
I've got a question, mayor.
Yes.
Did he give a report, you know?
The report was him coming to the meeting.
Not nothing in writing?
I don't think that was ever agreed, it was that he would report to the city council, it didn't say a writing report, written report.
Okay.
So we need a motion to amend the accounts payable excluding Ackerman, and is there a motion? Motion's made by Alderman Farrenwell, is there a second? Hearing no second. Alderman McGee seconds, on the question. So this is to remove Ackerman, so an aye vote would remove Ackerman, and a nay vote would reject this, and then going back to the original motion of approving accounts payable, just for clarity. On the question.
Yes, don't we have an agreement, wasn't there a written agreement, how much we would pay this person to do the work?
Yes, it was spending up to $15,000, yes. So
Question, mayor, for council. Would that put us in a position of lawsuit or contractual, out of contractual obligations?
Yes, it could. You have a contract with this attorney, you're contracted to pay him a certain amount, this is his final bill, you've paid everything but this final amount, you will likely seek reimbursement of the bill.
Could I just ask clarification on that? If we can appropriately maintain that we don't feel that the entire scope of work was performed, would we be entitled to not pay a portion of the bill?
It's a long, drawn-out road to try to win that. If we're sued, we're going to spend a lot of money at the city trying to defend the non-payment of the, what is it, $1,800? I mean, could we have a conversation with the attorney and see if he would agree to it? Maybe, I doubt that he will, but it does present some liability issues.
All right, thank you. So there's a motion and second to reject Ackerman from this accounts payable. An aye vote would reject, and a nay vote would not, and it would go back to the original motion to approve accounts payable. Is there any questions? So clerk, do the roll.
Alderman Johnson.
No.
Alderman Rol.
No.
Alderman Carr.
No.
Alderman McGee. Alderman Farrenwell.
Oddly enough, no.
No?
No.
Alderman Rita.
No.
Alderman Montoya.
Nope.
Six no's and four ayes.
Motion fails to remove Ackerman, back to the original motion, it was made and seconded on the roll call for approving accounts payable in its entirety. Clerk, please do the roll.
Alderman Johnson.
Um, I'm only saying this because we can get him off the books, but I don't agree with what a doggone thing he's done, and I don't want to go into lawsuits and spend more money than the $1,800 would cost us, so that's my vote.
Is that an aye?
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Rol.
Aye.
Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman McGee. Alderman Farrenwell.
Aye, as Alderman Johnson said.
Alderman Rita.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Six ayes, your honor.
Motion carries. I need a motion to consent to mayor's appointment of three library trustees. Many people reached out to me, there's three vacancies, I'm making appointments of Emily Meyer, Rachel Orozco, Marcia Rauk, to fill the vacancies on the library board. There's other vacancies that we have to discuss very soon. These are mayoral appointment vacancies to advisory positions. I'm not sure, we've gone back and forth in the past, do they need ratification vote? I mean, they stand either way, so we'll do both.
Yeah, we're going to do a motion to consent for each separate.
Can I ask if there are all, if there's any issue doing them all together?
Yes.
Is there an issue doing them all together? All right, I need a motion to approve the three appointments to library trustees. Motion by Alderman Johnson, is there a second? By Alderman Rol, on the question. Clerk, do the roll.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Rol.
Aye.
Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman McGee. Alderman Farrenwell.
Aye.
Alderman Rita.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Seven ayes, your honor.
Thank you, and just speaking on this, every committee that we have has vacancies, so we're doing, there's, I think Howard Capari's working on a combo zoning and planning that he's going to be, he's already sent a memo out to the Alderman, I believe, that's coming down the pipe, and then we have to do some appointments there and reappoint people that are already on the board, but there still might be some vacancies there because there's some expired terms now. And their civil service, I think might have one, police pension, fire pension have one or two. We're trying to get down to exactly how many positions are vacant in each one, and once that is known, I'll bring them forward. Some of these are more technical than library, where we need some people with some financial background, like the pension boards, and possibly some retired people that have served in the past in our police and fire departments. So I'll keep the council appraised on that, but I'd like to have people that are actually showing up to meetings. We've had an issue in the past of people not giving a forum. Historic preservation's another one, plus there's forestry that's on the books and a few others that I'd like to talk about with the Alderman when we get down that path, but some appointments, so we need some people that are actually willing to volunteer, these are unpaid positions, and to give their time to the city. So keep that in mind and start thinking of some names. Before we get to the next one, I'm going to do the plaque thing now, because I know I kind of skipped over that, I think, because I didn't have it separately on here. We have mayor's announcements under six before we get into these two resolutions. So, "On behalf of the city of Blue Island, it is my pleasure to officially recognize and thank the members of the previous city council, as well as the former city officers. Each of you took significant time from your busy lives and dedicated that time to public service. Doing the business of the city takes time. I know, just, I sat here along with you, it's a, it's a thankless job, a lot of hours, a lot of time away from your families. Long nights tackling pressing issues. We've had meetings that have gone three, four, or five hours sometimes, especially budget appropriations, you know, so these, these take a lot of time away from our families, and there's no reward that's good enough for the public service of what you've done before, serving on this council. It's not glamorous work, but it's vitally important to make the city work. So on behalf of myself, the new city council, and the city staff, and all the residents of Blue Island, I sincerely thank each and every one of you for your service, and I'm going to come down there and individually call people up to give them their plaque, those that came. I see the majority of you are here, and I, there's even a plaque, it's a simple gesture, it's not anything close to thanks the city owes you and your gratitude for your work you put into these positions, so.
So I have a few here for Domingo Vargas, who was mayor and Alderman. He's not here, but I have Domingo Vargas, mayor, for eight years of your commitment and dedication to the city of Blue Island, and also he gave 20 years as Alderman to the city of Blue Island, and I'll make sure we get these to him. I have one here for city clerk Randy Howser, I'd like to invite him up here. Me and Randy got along 90% of the time, we agreed at 99% of the issues. We did run against each other, but I think Blue Island will win no matter who gets in there, so, you know. So I'd like to get Randy his plaque. I have the Blue Island Beer one I bought, did you get that one yet?
No.
Blue Island Beer Company made their own Hawaiian shirts with their logo on them. Get yours now before they sell out, that's my plaque. So Carmine Bellato, my father, who led me down this path of public service, I have two also for him because he served under two administrations, almost two and a half, because he did a good transition along with the clerk, with Hirow Proust, who's a protege. So I have one for his service as an Alderman. I think this was the one here for four years as an Alderman, under Don Colquitt, and treasure under Don Colquitt, and also one here for city treasure for 12 years, the city treasure.
Thank you. I'd like to say a few words.
Go ahead, go ahead. Go ahead, I'm going to invite Randy up here too.
A few words I'd like to say to the council is basically this. I've been doing this for a long time, from 1975, I think I started getting involved with the city, involved in my community and such. It takes a lot of patience, it takes a lot of listening, and like someone told me a long time ago, we have two ears, one mouth. I think religiously speaking, God made that for a purpose. You have to listen a lot more and speak when necessary and with the proper information, and to never make promises you can't keep. City treasure, I think I did the best I could to make some changes and be more transparent, and I think that's going to continue because I think everyone is more knowledgeable nowadays with the computer and the technology, and I think that basically there's got to be more answers and given appropriately and ask questions appropriately. And one of my pet peeves when I was standing up there is that, basically when you have 70, so many hours prior to coming to council, questions should be asked prior to that, I have always said that. And then, if you want to still bring it up to council, that's fine, but so that way the person can prepare for whatever questions are necessary, because nobody's going to remember the accounts payable as well as Pam Cashford. She sees the bills every day, she knows exactly what it's for, but at the same time, she has no authority, it goes through the finance director, it goes through the chain of command, through the process. So be, be understanding about certain factors, and if you want to get more involved in those situations, that's fine. But I want to thank also the city of Blue Island for giving me the opportunity to do all these things. Thank you.
Thank you. I was just going to say it's been a pleasure, so, in serving the city of Blue Island, so thank you. Annette Alexander. Same thing, we got her a plaque for her, two years of her commitment to the city of Blue Island, we'll make sure this gets to her. Michael Alderman on the city council, before we lost half our city council, we have, second ward Alderman, William Cuthers. Me and William are also best friends, so it was a good relationship while it lasted. You want to stick around? I've got Luis Montoya, I've got big shoes to fill up there.
Say anything one?
I'll say a couple of words.
I want to share a couple of words officially to the new guys up here on the board. I'm sure it's only been, it's only been a month, and I'm sure it's already come with its headaches, and it's, you know, late nights arguing amongst ourselves, but there is a payoff, especially when you're, when you drive around and you look around town and you see those small changes, inch by inch being made, that's where the payoff's going to go, so more power to you guys, keep fighting, keep doing what you have to do, and, you know, work together. Thank you.
We got a third ward Alderman, Kevin Donahue, also a member of the St. Danus Committee with me. Kevin is also
Eight years?
Eight years. Yeah, go ahead.
Hey, everyone, I miss you. I'm sure we're getting a lot more sleep, though. It was fun, it was, I'm grateful for my time, I got to serve with a lot of great people, I know I saw Alderman Ossling here as well, and Alderman Stone, it was always lovely to come and work with everyone, even though we didn't agree, and we disagreed a lot the last few years, it was still, it was still worth it, we got a lot done. This last budget was tough, but it's, the city's in good shape, we had to make a lot of hard decisions, and there's hard decisions that still need to be made, but it's worth it. I love this town, you all love this town, there's no one who loves this town more than Mayor Bellato. And me and Fred, we don't always got along, but we would talk it out, we would work it out, we would find compromise. That's, I see Mark Petosca and Tom Wogan are on the resolutions for to be appointed. I, Tom, or Mark and I, we were political opponents when we first met, we did not get along, but over the years, we rebuilt that trust, and we worked together because we knew, we knew this town was worth it. Same thing with Wogan, Wogan and I don't always agree, but he's, there's no one better. There's no one better than these two, there's no one better than Mayor Fred, and there's no one better than the city council. You love this community like I do, we're all a la familia. There's only one me, there's only one you, and there's only one Blue Island, so please would just work together and get along. Thank you.
Alderman Tom Hawley. You know, Tom served on community development almost my entire, my entirety, being Alderman, and I think we agreed 100% of the time. Different ways of going about it, but I want to continue that, and he's not off the hook along with all you elected officials, I'll be calling you soon for volunteer positions. And Tom's already agreed, we're going to continue with the parades in town, special events, and he's been good at that, he's the maestro of that, so if you want to continue working together on that, then maybe more official position. So, Tom, thank you for your service.
Everyone's already said everything, it was a pleasure to work for the city council and for the city of Blue Island for eight years, I, I think I will miss it. Good luck to all of you as you bring the city forward in the next four years and hopefully beyond. I know you'll all do the best you can, and you'll, you'll make it, make the city as the best it can be. And I know Mayor Bellato will do a great job as well, so I hope, once we get past the few bumps in the road at the beginning, I hope everything goes a little bit more smoothly[1644.40] few bumps in the road at the beginning, I, I hope everything goes a little bit more smoothly and, and people work together to make Blue Island a great place to live. Thanks.
Johnny Ringo Bill. Served for the last few years as fifth ward alderman for the city of Blue Island. Donnie's been around for a long time, you know some of his streets. Alright. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. I would like to say, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First of all, I would like to thank God, because without him, I'm nothing. And I thank the mayor for Fred Bellato and the city council for their distinguished honor. And this is a nice gesture and service for me as alderman of the fifth ward and to the citizens of Blue Island. I just wanna say, my journey is not over yet. The best is yet to come. Thank you and may God bless you all.
Thank you. Alan Stevo. Alan Stevo here tonight. We got him also, nice plaque. I only included the last term of service on here, but Mr. Stevo was an alderman for many years prior with different administrations. So we got a nice plaque for his service and we'll make sure I deliver this to him. Thank you. We got Blue Island's fire chief, Mr. Jim Klinker.
Yeah, I know, I know. Everyone knows how much I love to photograph, so.
Do you see me like, I'm scared?
I'm not gonna make you sit for a minute.
Just quick.
Perfect, thank you.
Jim was one of those aldermen that, that said how it was and that's how it was and take it or leave it. So I really enjoyed working with him on the city council. It was good to vet to Jim because he had experience as an employee for many years in the city. And that's, that's something that's very rare as we go into, these days now, less and less of our employees work and live in the city at the same time. Jim was one of the exceptions. So even when we're in council here, I take his brain more than he probably wanted me to, to get the position when you work for the city, not only as representative of the city, but as an employee of the city. And I've still done things that I've not.
Appreciate it. I'm already on camera, so I might as well talk just briefly. So, like I told you, I'm available any time you need me. I talked to Josh after the election, I talked to Josh's opponent during the election when she knocked on my door. I'm here for anyone, I'm still here, we're not going anywhere. There's rumors on election day that I'm moving. We are not moving anywhere, so can act that one out of the park. And yeah, 35 and a half years working for the city, but I'll still be around if you guys need me for anything. Thank you.
Alderman Mike Metcalf had come tonight, he actually picked up the plaque from the city clerk at the same time getting a city sticker, I believe, right? I have the city sticker that the clerk's been pushing out. And if you have a bunch of city stickers ready, please do so. We will be enforcing it, so you don't look out for that, but they do June 30th. Thank again for all the officials that have served in the capacity, even if the ones that have been just finished serving, those that were here before. I see Alderman Ossling back there too. Known her for my entire life, pretty much. I think I got everybody. And Mark Petoska also served as alderman for a few years. It's an thankless job. Take a lot of phone calls all different hours of the day. And your job is to, for minimal cost or pay, is to make everybody happy and it's very hard to do. You never actually make everybody happy. The longer you're in office, the more people you upset by doing the right thing at times. And you're never gonna make everybody happy and that's a big thing to get over. So again, thank you for the service that you provided for the city. Alright, I give a mayor's report while we're here talking before we go into the last two resolutions. Alright. Over the past week, I've spoken to several of you at length about this ordinance. Hold on a second, I skipped over something. Look at the grant. Alright. Workman's comp. I gave a little bit update last time about workman's comp. The city continues to lose money because there is no third-party administrator adjusting workman's comp claims. We are working with Allian Insurance to find a third-party administrator who can properly process our workman's comp claims. Assess for any fraudulent activity and assess for overpayments. When we get to the committee structure, this is gonna be talked at length at our next committee meeting. It's some, one of the issues we need to address sooner rather than later. It's costing the city a lot, as those you can see in the accounts payable. There's always workman's comp stuff and it's, and we really don't have a way to track it the way right now, so. Economic development projects, as I've discussed in the past, City Hall needs to play a larger role in economic development, specifically in bringing in new businesses. I've had multiple meetings with different retail developers over the past two weeks discussing different potential retail spaces along 127th, 119th, 123rd and Western Avenue and Old Western Avenue. Our hope is that in the coming months, we'll be cutting ribbons on new retail that will strengthen our tax base. There's a few bites that I've met on that are very excited for properties in town and supposedly submitting stuff to us very soon. Other items, we have the Blue Island Historical Society has requested a partial street closure on the evening of June 19th on Greenwood Avenue between York and High Street for the purpose of an outdoor concert. Mr. Kevin Brown has communicated with the residents on the block and will be coordinating with city staff to ensure this is a safe and enjoyable event. I had the opportunity to participate in the official grand opening of the Cook County Health Building with Cook County President Tony Preckwinkle, Congressman Bobby Rush, Cook County Commissioner Deborah Sims and State Rep. Bob Rita. The event marked the one-year anniversary of the county public health building being open in Blue Island. They wanted to wait till we were further past the COVID to actually have a ribbon-cutting ceremony. We have other issues in that site, as we know what to deal with, with parking and the influx of people that have been coming in, but it is overall a good thing for the town. And now that they fully, I think they're not doing the COVID stuff there anymore, they're, they're doing the dentist offices and radiology and that floor they were doing it, it's fully open, so they had the grand opening. And I believe I was invited to this before the election even, because I, I know Alderman Fairwall, they mentioned his name several times, because probably we responded at the same time. Felt like two months ago, they invited us. And I almost forgot about it and Tom Logan called me up, he's like, hey, are you going to the Cook County thing? I said, oh, that's right. It was like eons ago, it felt like. So I attended the event and represented the city of Blue Island. I didn't know I was asked to talk, but they did pull me up there. Alright, code enforcement. And this is a big issue that the committee of the whole and the council will have to work on very soon, is our building department. Code enforcement has been lapsed in our city for at least two to three years and any previous officials already know that. That's an issue we need to handle again, also sooner rather than later. The problem has gotten so bad that our housing court, when I met with them, had little to no actual citation to prosecute in the last three to six months. We have too many homes and vehicles that are out of compliance with the city code. So we're working on, there's positions posted right now for a part-time inspector. Hopefully we'll be able to post a full-time inspector. The budget calls for three or four positions, I believe. And a secretarial position, I believe, is posted. If not, it's already, is it posted already? It's gonna be posted. There's no one answering the phones in that department right now, so that's, that's another issue we need to handle very soon. Alright, and brings me to these two ordinances. Well, actually, it's only number four. So over the past week, I've spoken to several of you at length about this ordinance. At the request of members of the city council, the following changes I made. I made the city council date the same as Tuesday in here, so we're still meeting the second of four Tuesdays. I separated the committee of the whole to a separate night. Individual names were removed from the administrative positions to allow for greater council involvement and hiring for the future. Salaries were added in to clarify exactly the positions and the salary associated with it. And I removed the language eliminating legislative council, keeping the power reserved inside the authority that exists currently. In addition, I've stated several times, and I'll state it again tonight, my willingness to allow council members to choose their respective liaison positions. I believe the single most important issue is the day-to-day management of the city, is a proper administrative structure. We need staff at the moment, we have dangerously few qualified people working at the city. This is the first step in rebuilding our city's workforce and making our government work for the residents. Again, I ask you to support these motions. And before we get into this, as I mentioned when I talked to other aldermen, I will be asking to separate this and I'll clarify in each one. I'm sure there'll be some discussion on this, but I'm asking the aldermen to support the both halves that I'm asking for. So I think I covered everything. I tried to keep it a little shorter than last meeting, because there's so much going on. Alright, so we have ordinance 2021-013A, an ordinance of the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, amending Chapter 30, city council, and Chapter 31, city officials, of Title III, administration of the code of Blue Island, Illinois. So I'll ask for the first motion for committee of the whole with seven liaisons chosen by the city council, which is something I agreed to when I met and discussed with some of the aldermen. We can clean up the language and email it out, but if we separate that from the two administrative positions, was the request that was made to me. So it would be the committee of the whole and changing the mayor to city council, picking the liaisons. I did mention, and I'll mention it right now, these are the biggest departments, just from previous experience, that I need covered, so we can move forward. And again, this could be fluid. We can discuss as we go forward, there's some issues that are not in here that we need to discuss. These are the major departments that need attention, along with what existed in the past. So, finance, police and fire, public works, the building department, rec center and golf, community development, and marketing. So these are the seven areas I'd like liaisons for, and we can add to those as we move forward, but there's some bigger, big issues in every single thing I mentioned. So I'm asking you support, and then how we can do it is up to the council. You could all email me what you're interested in and I can email back a spreadsheet, this is what everybody asked to do. At the end of the day, I'll ask for you guys to ratify those things at the next meeting, but I'm letting you guys pick. Because at the end of the day, we're all sitting here and we have to get the job done. So whatever interests you specifically, I have no issue with it. So, and it's one of the issues that we came to hopefully in agreement to pass these two separate motions. So. So the first one I'm asking for is the committee of the whole, meeting on the second Wednesday of the month, fixed meeting. And if we need more, which we probably will, we'll call special meetings on Wednesday nights after the regular city council meeting. But at least fix one committee of the whole meeting. And I've seen the liaisons working with the staff members and providing information back to the committee of the whole, so we can digest it and vote on it. I think it'll streamline information and all of us can be on the same page. The members that sat with me before, we're having 14 aldermen and the mayor and treasurer and clerk, it was impossible to get all the information to everybody, so everybody has the information before voting on it at city council. And I think this would help solve that problem. So I'm asking for a motion for committee of the whole, the council appointing liaisons Tuesday night, meetings for city council, Wednesday for committee meetings.
Just point of information?
Yes.
So this would be, what, I'm looking at a section five?
I'm gonna ask council of the whole, because she's got her five.
So we're clear, I just wanna be clear about.
Right. So I think the proposal would be that ordinance 2021-13A would remove sections four, nine, 10, and 14 is, just needs to be removed because it's not going to, we're gonna remove 14 from both of the ordinances, just a legal sentence that needs to be removed.
Just catching up.
And then we would amend section five and seven to have the liaisons chosen by council. So that would be 13A.
Alright. We're moving four, nine.
10.
10.
And 14.
And 14. Sorry, I'm just catching up with you here.
Yeah, I'm in with you too, Bill, I'm trying to get through here. Is there a motion to approve the as amended, as I mentioned and clarified by city coun... Alderman Johnson, I saw your hand raised.
I was raising to make the motion.
Alderman Johnson made the motion, is there a second? Alderman, roll. On the question. Alderman Faironwell.
Just wanna make sure that our clarifying language is clear on section five, so just, if I could just go through a couple of points, just to get all agreement, so that there's no misunderstandings. Alright, so, and I'm just gonna go run it down, starting with the part of section five.
Page four, correct?
Page four, right, thank you. So, the 30-6.16 membership of committees, we're now saying that rather than the mayor, that would need to be changed, reflect that the aldermen are gonna name, that we're gonna elect the liaison, we're gonna select and approve liaisons, right?
Yes.
That's section A.
However you guys wanna do it, you could all send me emails, I put on a spreadsheet, send it back to you guys.
I just wanted, you know, just so that we have the ability to agree on that. So does that, can you?
Yes, it'll be amended in section five and section seven. I think the last sentence of section five is where we would amend that. The seven operational areas of the city to be assigned a committee liaison shall be, as determined by the mayor, that would be changed to, by city council. And that's section five. And then section seven, where it says the mayor shall appoint, that would be, city council shall assign.
Alright. Is there any other questions? I'm putting a lot of trust that we can move forward. This is pretty much everything's been asked, so.
So just to be, again, 100% clear, because this is important and I'm, and Mr. Mayor, I do wanna say I appreciate your willingness to work on this, it's much appreciated. If we pass this tonight as amended and anything that is the amendment is for some reason not properly understood, what happens at that point?
So your question is if the...
We don't have a clean copy to vote on here right now, that's my concern.
Sure, if the ordinance isn't amended as you expect it to or as you believe was agreed upon, that's something that we can work on, but I think we're all on the same page in the language we bring there.
Yeah, I'm making it pretty open here, it's recorded meeting, okay, so. Okay, I think we're... Alderman, read it.
So what's expected of a committee liaison? Is it basic?
Like the old role of chairman, basically? Except you're in committee of the whole, so the committee of the whole would be responsible for the paperwork side of things. However, if you meet with a department head, you have to come to the next committee of the whole meeting and report back.
And share it, okay. Gotcha.
Or email it to the council, however you wanna do it, we just gotta be careful and we're applying all the same rules of OMA, you know.
Since, I have a question.
Yes.
Since we're all here, now like the answer decides to be, I don't know, whatever committee player is saving, does she have to take minutes and everything?
No, it's under the committee of the whole, so it falls under the clerk's auspices, we'll figure it out. It's with the benefit of committee of the whole. The old chairman, those of you that were chairman before, had to do their own minutes, their own postings, it was a lot of paperwork. We can handle that all in-house still, because the committee of the whole just makes it a lot cleaner that way. But however the council wants to move forward, tell me what you're interested in. I've had one request so far of finance, I have no problem with it, I have no problem with anything, it's your guys' decision, so. Annette, Alderman, read it.
So, we will not be doing agendas, correct?
No, it's a fixed committee of the whole, just like a city council agenda, except a committee meeting agenda.
Okay. I got you, okay, just wanted to be sure.
And committees, at the end of the day, the council still has to approve everything, yeah.
Yeah, it sounds a lot easier.
One other point of clarification, would we have our first meeting next Wednesday? I mean, a week from Wednesday is the same?
So, because the way we set it up, we can call a special committee of the whole, if that's what you guys want, if we agree on this tonight. Yeah, it would be a special committee of the whole, but it's not the first regular.
Meeting day would be a week from Wednesday, so why don't we get going here?
Yeah. Alright, any other questions? Clerk, do the roll.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman, roll.
Aye.
Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Faironwell.
Aye.
Alderman Rita.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Seven eyes, your honor.
Motion carries. So the second part of the, how I broke this down, was the other half of the stuff, for the most part, that was in this ordinance, not naming any names, because I assured the council to be involved through the committee of the whole process and the liaison process to work through that, so I'm not asking for that tonight at all. And actually, we, it's still on the table, part of the agenda. I put in their original job descriptions and a position of city administrator, deputy city administrator, with job descriptions, and that was from our original meeting with Mr. Faironwell, and they're, they're pretty detailed and they report to the city council, which is what we agreed to. And originally, we had three directors, I don't think the system ever worked. This is cleaner, both my administrator and deputy administrator can know what the other one's doing at all times. If one's gone for an extended period of time, the other one knows exactly what's going on. It's something the city's been lacking. When one person would disappear, nobody would know what that department was doing. This fixes that problem, it eliminates position on paper, and I'm cleaning up, it's a lot of housekeeping here, and it's just, call it what it is, a city administrator, deputy city administrator, almost identical job descriptions, very detailed in here, and just cleaner. So I'm asking, I was asked by one of the aldermen to put salaries in here, I put that in here, along with the job descriptions. So I'm asking for a motion to support creating the two positions, not naming the names, just creating the two positions. So. I need a motion, a second, then we'll get to the questions. So is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Carr, is there a second? Second by Alderman Montoya, on the question.
Yes, mayor, is it, I know we have an appropriated position for financial director, right?
Technically, we have a finance director that's in appropriation, by line item, yes.
And, and...
That was the Topeka position.
Correct.
Yeah.
And what I'm seeing now is that Mr. Petoska has actually been kind of performing at that position since we made an agreement for committees of the whole. I would just, wanted to make the suggestion, could we just place Mr. Petoska in as the finance director, since he's already in line?
I'm, I'm taking the names, we have to get to that point yet. We're not naming any names, and I agree to take that off the table.
I just like him, so I just wanted to.
Yeah, no, I know, I know. They are both knowing, just like I mentioned, they both know what the other one's doing at all times. They have a very good working relationship that I've witnessed for over a month now. And they're, I can call one, the other one knows what the other one's doing, saves me another phone call. And that's the way I wanted it to work, that's how I envisioned it to work, and it's been working very well. And a lot of fires we're trying to put out, and that's why I created the two positions where they both are the yin and the yang together. I'm asking just for the positions and not the names right now. We're one step before, we're putting the cart before the horse by naming the names to the positions.
Could I just ask, what, we're gonna have this executive committee meeting, and I'm Could I just ask, what, we're going to have this executive committee meeting, and I'm just a little unclear. Is this going to be a part of that discussion?
I can, we can continue with there. At the end of the day, I foresee this coming out of the contingency that was appropriate with all the zeroed out positions. So just as the council knows, and we are specifically going in an executive session to talk about police staffing issues, but we can have a discussion in there also about other staffing issues, as long as it's tied to employee performance and salaries. The contingency fund nearly has a million dollars, and it hasn't been touched. The reason why it's so high is that every vacant position, from deputy chief to public works to summer help, to golf part-time, to everything, was zeroed out and put into contingency fund. Normally, the city has two to three hundred, we found out from last year, and Mr. Klinker worked on it specifically in finance. We used that money and did a couple roads for it. We all, at least we're the, on assumption, we're going to zero this out, the next administration can clean it up. It is a contingency fund and an appropriation, not a budget. I a hundred percent agree, we need to move to a budget. I actually have issues with the calendar year that we follow right now also. From January to December is odd. You know, right now, we're halfway through the budget year already. Good and bad, we haven't spent any money, but the city isn't really functioning either, so.
Could I just ask a clarification? What, which contingency funder, I just want to make sure I understand.
There's one large contingency fund we stuck every extra position into. It's almost a million dollars.
Is, I'm sorry, is this the, just so I'm clear, there's a 409 general administration, that's the number, I'm looking at the appropriation, sorry.
I don't have the appropriation in front of me. I didn't know if Mr. Petosky or Mr. Wilken has it in front, but it's like nine hundred and?
Because there's a?
Fifty-some thousand or something.
For FY twenty, it's an odd thing. I just was looking at it. For FY twenty, it was nine hundred and thirty-one thousand, a hundred and thirty-four dollars. For twenty twenty-one, it's one million, nine hundred and forty-four thousand and thirty-eight dollars. If I'm looking, I just want to make sure I understand the right line.
Yeah, I don't have those numbers in front of me. I didn't know if they do either, but it was nearly a million dollars. That's what I was.
I guess my other side of the question is, this is separate from the nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar contingency that we discussed, that we agreed was going to be for roads and so forth?
Well, first, I'm only aware of one contingency fund that's that large, and secondly, the city can't really function if we didn't use the contingency for what a contingency fund is. Just like last year, we had to dip into it several times for covering legal services, right? We dipped into the contingency fund. That's what the contingency fund is for, something that's not planned at the time of the appropriation.
But that, that fund was for the money for unexpected, not unexpected, but new money to us that we're going to receive from the federal, we anticipate receiving from federal government, that we have never received before, and that money was to be set aside for roads, streets, and ALS equipment.
That, the care stuff you're talking about? I think it was in a separate line.
It is a separate, I just want to make sure.
I believe it's a separate line, Alderman, yeah. We did bring up the fact, we wanted to use that for that other purpose.
Right, I just want to make sure we're not going into that fund.
But I don't have the figures in front of me, but I'm pretty sure we're talking about the same thing, yes.
That's important.
And this would clean up where that, this, this motion would clean up, hopefully answer questions for some of the aldermen, where the revenues are coming from, to cover these two positions. However, there's a lot of vacant positions even in here right now, that I'm not sure a hundred percent we need to post for, but we got to, we have to work through that stuff through committee, because we have a lot of vacant positions right now that I think possibly we can combine into other positions, or minimalize those positions, like deputy chief, that I'll talk about in executive, that we need desperately. We actually have two, but we need at least one, and it's not in there anymore.
All right, well, given that there's some uncertainty about which fund is which, I am not opposed to any of this, but I would like to know more specifically what we're talking about. I would move to table this until we can talk more specifically about which funds this stuff is coming out of.
I was hoping we'd get past this.
I know, but I?
I had a lot of trust that we'd get past this, and I'd prefer not to table it, because I'm not associating the names with the positions. It does clean up and answer every question that was posed to me, and I went on a lot of good faith here to separate the positions to do this. So I'm asking the council to just approve Part A, and then we can get to the Part B with Mr. Alderman Johnson with the cart. We can worry about that at a future meeting, but I think we can get Part A done tonight. It would make sense. I put myself out there, put a lot of trust, taken the suggestions from the council, and I agreed to every demand that was given. And I think that's the port of going back and forth. We're negotiating here for the betterment of Blue Island. So, Alderman Johnson.
Alderman, I mean, Mayor Belado, with these two positions, right, are they to report also to the committee?
Yes, it's in here very clearly. They report to the City Council.
Okay.
Yeah, and they have been. If anybody's emailed either one of them and didn't get a response, I'd be shocked. They've been working diligently, a lot more than forty, probably eighty hours a week so far, trying to get this, and every single day, there's been an issue that has come up. I would say multiple times a day, issues have come up, and they've been doing the job successfully. They need help, which we need to talk about in executive, but they're doing far superior position in my seven, six, seven years as an alderman than in our previous director of finance administration. I know the bar is low, but there's a lot of work to do.
Well, I'm sorry, could I just make one more comment about this? And, you know, I certainly, I fully agree, we need to move along here as quickly as we can, but I also don't want to make rash decisions that, you know, we regret later, which we have been known to do. And, you know, in this regard, you know, you may hear me surprised to hear me say this, but one of the things I would like to have had considered for the city administrator's position was possibly a much higher salary for perhaps someone with a master's degree. I feel, I have felt that we have frankly kind of shortchanged ourselves over time, understanding that we're strapped for funds, but at the same time, we can see the result of when we have hired folks for frankly less than the going rate. It's hard to find good people. It's hard to retain them. They don't last very long. They have tremendous churn. And so, you know, I, I wished that we had been able to talk about this, you know, and set some different standards for.
And we're talking about it now, though, and?
Right, no, and we are, and it's good.
And just to give an example, I have multiple master's degrees, right? I'm not saying I would be a good city administrator. Maybe from experience, I would be, but my degrees are school administration. But my city administrator of choice has led successfully several municipal bodies, some larger than the city of Blue Island, and some right here in town, including the Blue Island Park District, with pretty good success rate, in finding grant opportunities, running an efficient staff, and keeping longevity of employees, and improving just the physical makeup of the park district. That being said, I think I made very good choice. However, I'm leaving the positions themselves for you guys to vet them, even though they've been doing the jobs for over a month now, and I've been posting positions like I've agreed to do. There's some things I can, some things I'd like the council to ratify. I think I've gone above and beyond answering questions, putting stuff in here. If you'd like to add a line item into the job description, this would be a good time to do it, and we could probably still do it. Every year's different.
Well, let me, maybe I don't understand quite where we are, because my understanding is that the two persons that you've selected for these positions, it's your position that they're going to be in those positions. That's just my understanding of where we are right now. Am I wrong, or am I right?
No, you're, you're right, and I made it very clear when we first met, and I think they're very qualified for what we have. They're vested in Blue Island, which was a big thing for me. Both of them are very vested in the town, and we've been shortsighted in the staff in the past, where we think just a person with the best qualifications is going to be to put Blue Island in the best position. Both these individuals have a lot of connections to Blue Island, a lot of love for the town, a lot of long-term relationships in town, both. And that was a bigger qualification than a master's degree, in my opinion. You know, I, again, I do have a degree. I have several degrees, but I am also Blue Island, and this is a working-class town, and I want somebody that loves the town almost as much as me and us that sit here at the City Council. And that was a big thing for me.
No, no one would debate that anyone loves this town any more than you, for sure. But, and this is a good discussion. I'm just saying that, you know, you decided that you wanted these folks in these positions, and perhaps that's your prerogative, but it doesn't feel real good from this side of the town. It doesn't.
Well, not everything is feel-good with running a city, right?
I understand.
And just what I said earlier, you can't make everybody happy, but I'm trying. I'm trying here. And if they don't do their job well, I'll be the first one on their ass. And I'm going to say that very clearly, I'm going to speak like Blue Island right now, because I want them to care about the town and move us forward. And I think they are capable for that. I need to have people I can work with. I am here. I am the CEO of the city. I need to have people I can work with. I don't want to be forced into a person like we had with our finance director in the past, and that was, went through a somewhat vetting process, and it was a complete alder failure. No one would disagree with that. There's other positions here that I need the council input on, because you'll be working on them, especially the building department, for example. We have some big gaps in that department that I want council approval, because you're the ones calling them, okay? Not asking for a lot. There's a hundred and fifty, two hundred employees here. These are the two that I'd be working with on a hourly basis, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I would agree completely that these are the two most important hiring decisions that we're probably going to make. And that's why I have some concerns about just the process that we, that we haven't been through.
But going back, just, just saying, past experiences, I've been involved all my life. The previous mayor, somewhat involved, Alderman, on a casual basis, correct? On a casual basis, we can agree on that. You want to be involved, it's still my decision. The mayor before that did involve the alderman really at all.
Not at all.
Okay, I'm coming way out there with a lot of trust with the alderman that we have here, that I will include you in the process as much as possible, but these two people are already doing the jobs, wrecking a ship, finding millions of dollars, we didn't know were still on the table, by making calls to connections of people they've worked with in the past. They have paid for their salary already multiple times in thirty days, and I think we can get past these two positions. I'm fixing job descriptions, which we never had before, tying them into the ordinance, reporting to the City Council. I've, I've done everything, you know. I'm asking you to support this, and we can move forward. We still have other stuff to talk about. Public works, police department. I need your opinions on this, because we are all here elected. There are certain things the aldermen and the mayor have. The mayor has to be here every day. Everybody wants to talk to the mayor. I need to have people I can call on a minute's notice that I can trust, and care about Blue Island, and that I took above all else, so. Alderman Johnson, I saw, and then I saw Alderman Rita.
Yes, I just wanted to address this to my fellow councilmen, if I could, all of us as a whole. You know, we was in the last administration together, and we allowed a lot of the decisions to be made upon the mayor that we had prior to Alderman Belado. And some of his decisions wasn't the best, and I'm just saying, you know, I'm not trying to shoot Fred down, I mean, a mayor of Alado down, but also stating, try to give him a chance too. So if we don't like what he chose, we can be put in a position to do, to do the same, you know what I'm saying? So I think they submitted their resumes to us for us to have something. And I'm not saying that because Fred and I argue and get along at the same time, is that we're asking him to make a decision for to push this city forward, and I think we're both, we're all in agreeance with that. But sometimes his tactics or whatever is questionable, but so was the last mayor. And I'm just saying, you know, if we don't like this position, give him a chance, try it. If we don't, we shoot him down, as simple as that. Can't we agree to that?
Yes, again, at the end of the day, we all work for the pleasure of the citizens of Blue Island, right? And you got to give me a chance. I'm trying to do the best here. We, even when I disagreed with the previous mayor, we gave it two years before we brought some controversial stuff up, wouldn't you agree, Alderman? We gave a few years before I brought some stuff up that would question his authority. But give me a chance, you know. I had Alderman Rita next, and then we'll come to you.
I just wanted to agree with Alderman Johnson. We've been on the council a long time together, and we've been through a couple mayors, and this is the very first time that I've ever been a part of a discussion with a mayoral appointment in an open forum like this. So I commend you for that, and I mean, I appreciate your questioning and et cetera, but at the end of the day, it is the mayoral appointment, and so, I don't, Alderman, I lost my train of thought here, but I mean, isn't it true, this is the very first time that we were ever in a forum like this to give our ideas and give our opinions, and it gets actually put in, you know, so I don't know, I think we're up to a good start.
And the other thing too, Alderman Rita, is that we're behind the eight ball right now.
Yeah.
Because we had no financial person, period, in, over a year, so we kind of need to move forward. But I want to make sure that we also be able to have reins on this new team, that's all.
That's why I put the job description, it's very heavy. I think it's the heaviest job description I've ever seen as an alderman, more than any position we posted before, and it's a lot of authority to the City Council here. So I'm asking for, Alderman McGee, I'm sorry.
So my question was to accountability, as that position, if, let's say, the administrator, the deputy administrator fails to do their duties, has played out any favor, what are the ramifications?
The easiest answer, I'll have council approve. Every employee once hired reports to the mayor, right? And the mayor, me, as I mentioned Alderman Farrenwald, I have a higher standard than my predecessor, extremely higher standard, regards for the entire city, police chief, fire chief, city administrator, deputy city administrator, secretary, regardless. That would be a review. If you're all telling me there's issues going on, especially at a public meeting, outside of, I appreciate the phone call, hey, so-and-so didn't get back to me, I'm going to respond to you. I'm very good at responding, as you guys have known. I'm tied to my phone too much, probably. Yes, there's going to be accountability. I want someone who represents me here when I'm not here, and I'm not going to look bad. So, and that's what the whole process is, right? We're, we, the city elected me as mayor, I have to make decisions. I'm including you guys on a lot of this right now at the front on basis of trust, so that's what I'm asking. And I made a lot of leeways here.
Did this as an employee of the city?
It'd be employee of the city.
New position, so again, take that into consideration. It's quite a huge job, it's a very difficult, demanding position, I don't think it's a challenge. So if somebody drops the ball, I do several different issues, and I think we see, we notice a pattern. What is the process for rectifying, maybe getting an individual that, that does have a replacement individual or something, or is it a more short-term?
It's just the same process for any employee. If you're going to tell me, we have a clerk in the, in the city clerk's office is not calling you back, I expect you to let me know, and start being the squeaky wheel about it. So we can address it. That's, that's at any employee workspace, outside of union regulations, which we only have a few unions here that actually specify how you can discipline. It just works like where I'm at right now. There's nothing specified, but if I'm not evaluating teachers in a timely fashion, I expect to be reprimanded, you know? So the motion was made and seconded. Would the clerk please do a roll call?
Alderman Johnson.
Just to clarify what we're voting on. We're voting on the two positions, the job descriptions for the two positions and the salary. The other part of the ordinance excluding legislative council language, which I think already moved out of there anyway at this draft, so, yeah.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Farrenwald.
No.
Farrenwald?
No.
Alderman Rita.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Six ayes, Your Honor.
Motion carries, and also Alderman McGee, I just got an email today about the striping. And we're, I'll bring it up in executive, yes. All right, thank you, Alderman. We can move forward, pass all this stuff. Now we got some, we have a resolution on here, and I'll give some background information, and some of the aldermen already know what this is. I think Mark Miller is here, is he? I'll explain it. We get a grant once a year, about seventy, I think this one's seventy-five thousand dollars, to tear down vacant homes. We've done this before through the South suburban land bank. So it's Resolution 2021-017, a resolution in the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, to enter into an agreement to accept a grant from the Illinois Housing Development Authority's abandoned residential property municipal leaf program. The, Mr. Miller has a list of homes that he's been on his watch list. If you didn't know that already, if there is a vacant home that is in your neighborhood, verify, it's probably already on the list, but verify if it's on his list, and usually, the easiest ones to go after, we go after first. The ones that are in worse conditions, we go after first, and this covers the cost on doing four or five houses minimally a year of dismantling and tearing them down. Some are salvageable, we put them out for sale. Mr. Miller's going to be bringing some stuff to the council very soon, to committee first, of putting some parcels up for bid the city's been hanging on to for far too long. Actually, I forgot some of them that we owned until the grass started getting too long. So this is just accepting a seventy-five thousand dollar grant from this agency to help us in that process.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Alderman Rita, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Johnson, on the question.
She's quick. Is this the same grant as we had like last year?
Every year, yeah. I think it's been seventy-five grand for the last few years.
Yep, we need to make more.
It takes, it takes about ten to fifteen to tear a house down, so we can only get four, five, six.
This also cuts the, the grass.
The grass for maintaining some of the abandoned homes, yes. So motion's made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman McGee. Alderman Farrenwald.
Aye.
Alderman Roll. I'm sorry, Alderman Rita.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Seven ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you, and motion carries. I think that's under mayor's announcements. I forgot for, because I forgot, and I think we've had enough discussion. Was there any alderman comments, and we'll make sure it's on the agenda for next meeting. Alderman Rita.
Yes, can we please add 12725 Lincoln on with Mark Miller's list for vacant property that needs to be addressed?
Okay, thank you. Any other comment under Alderman concerns? Alderman McGee, whoever wants to go. Thank you, thank you. Alderman Johnson.
Yes, Mayor, a couple of things. One, I wanted to thank Blue Island strong for feeding while, I want to say, over a hundred families the other weekend. And if you guys, you know, have spare time to come and volunteer to help, because there's still people in here that need and is affected by COVID, unemployment, and other things, as that. who need and is affected by COVID, unemployment, and other things of that nature. And it's only for a couple hours. And the next thing, Mayor, I want to address, see if we have already addressed this thing with Amber Smith. I think it's.
I'm familiar with the fence, correct?
With the fence, yes.
I'm emailed also on that, just going back months now. I have not seen a follow-up, at least if I might have missed it. If Mr. Wogan, Mr. Petosca, you're aware, this too is the fence in the gardens with the ComEd discrepancy with the building department. This rings a bell. We need to look into it. It's another issue, add onto the pile with our building department. Thank you. Any other Alderman comments or concerns? All right, we'll move on to city clerk's announcements.
I just want to remind everybody that Friday is the chamber golf outing, and if you're sponsoring or purchase dinner, I would like to thank Sarah Brown. I have something for you.
Pizza?
Band-Aids is, I'm still learning, and we need help in the clerk's office because, because we're shorthanded in the clerk's office. We have somebody that's a medical, we are facility, definitely clerk. But Tom and Mark took a PE teacher and turned it into a rapid computer person. I'm learning. And this is, I know anything to talk to them because I'm not an alderman no more, but I want to say something to Tom and Mark. We are shorthanded in the clerk's office. I try to get there by 7:30 in the morning, and one of the two are already down there helping. These girls are trying to balance, they're trying to, you know, everyone's trying to pitch in and cover for the two people that are out, and these two guys have been down there. All you have to do is call their cell phone, and their phones in their offices are probably not connected. And they're down there helping us one way or the other. So we have a little bit of connection for them in the office, and it's like energized money because they're moving nonstop. So I know I don't put to talk to them, but I have to say something about that. So as for this, when I was an alderman two years ago, I keep asking about vehicle stickers, because when you knock it out of the stores, a lot of people are like, well, why should I pay for a vehicle sticker if my neighbor's got it? Blah, blah, blah. So in the past, they would start in August writing tickets. Well, now, the administration's working very close with Chief Barr and the police department. They're going to start sooner, I believe. Is that correct, Fred?
So I guess the statute says the alderman, the mayor has to make a call when to enforce. I will be making that call probably very soon, because I'd rather get into the pattern off the right foot beginning. I already met with our prosecutor for the city code violation, which that falls under. And hopefully, people get the idea that they have to buy a city sticker, okay? We have to do it. It's one of the things a city, we have to do. It wasn't enforced regularly in consistency. I met with the chief, I met with our prosecutor. It will be. We can make concessions on if they come in, and we can waive it if they buy the sticker at the hearing, yada, yada. But it's got to come off, consistency is the bigger issue. That's never been enforced consistently, and that's what I'll be striving to do.
And so the chart I gave you is last year to the day, I believe, or pretty close to the day to today. I could tell, I could tell the girls every day how many vehicles with stickers we sold, how many online, because that's a big thing. We're pushing online with Banner 127. We're really trying to push the online sales because we are so short help in the clerk's office. I could go on also and tell you who bought a sticker and who did not buy a sticker.
Uh oh.
So this, yes, so watch out. If I knock on your door and ask, can you help me to buy your vehicle sticker, I probably will do that. So Third Millennium is a big, huge process they're doing. Tom and Mark were going through, realizing there's changes that need to be made, like real changes that will save us money. So I'm learning just lots of deals. So they're taking a PE teacher, and they're changing it to a rapid side person, yes.
If we renew online, does it get mailed to our home then? Okay.
I believe, so I, somebody, Mr. Genova called me today, and he already took us online, and already received it. So it's pretty quick.
And it's against June 30th. Let your constituents know in your wards, it's June 30th.
It's on your door.
Enforcement will start after that. Not exactly the date, but it'll start after June 30th, so let people know. Anything else, clerk? Thank you, Ms. Clerk.
It's posted on the website, correct?
Yep.
Go right on the website, and you could go and order it on the website.
It's on the website, social media, my personal social media, the mayor's social media. If you got your own, I encourage it to put it out there because it will be enforced.
And you're shorthanded.
There's a little delay, but I can relate to, there's a little delay of people that are mailing it in, because we are so short help down there. And anytime there's like, they have to balance by the end of the day. This little lady, she put lead today, so she balanced. So there's a stack that has to be mailed out from us, and then we'll get that to them this week.
So it'd be okay if Mr., me and Mr. Farenwald come down and volunteer and get a free sticker?
I answered, I worked more hours this week than I worked the other week with teaching. Saturday.
Quiet now. Teachers are the hardest working people in the world.
Saturday, I answered 80 phone calls, I returned 80 messages.
No, and side story, we moved to replace the carpeting in the clerk's office, and her desk fell apart.
I have no desk.
Her credentialed's still there, but.
And I work at a different computer.
We'll figure it out one day at a time.
Teamwork is, you know, we achieve team work, we achieve.
I believe we don't have any bids this meeting, correct?
No bids.
No bids. City treasurer?
Including your packet for today's meeting was a monthly report ending May 31st. Motion for that approval.
I'll make a motion.
Motion's made, is there a second? Second by Alderman Roll, on the question?
If you give me one second.
Alderman Farenwald?
I may have a question, let me just.
All right, no other questions? Clerk, please do a roll.
Alderman Johnson?
No.
Alderman Roll?
Aye.
Alderman Carr?
Aye.
Alderman McGee?
Aye.
Alderman Farenwald?
Aye.
Alderman Rita?
Aye.
Alderman Matoya?
Aye.
Six ayes, Your Honor.
Motion carries. City treasurer's announcements.
No announcements, but I did want to mention, we have Mr. Carmine Belado, your former treasurer. I just want to publicly thank you for the smooth transition that you've helped us out with upstairs in the finance department and with the city administrators. Really appreciate it, and it certainly saved us a lot of headaches and made the transitions smooth. Thank you so much for your help.
Thank you, thank you. All right, city attorney's business.
We have an ordinance here to amend Chapter 115, food and food dealers in the code of Blue Island. Basically, what this ordinance is doing is defining what outdoor dining is in the city and what the requirements will be of the food dealers to act as outdoor dining.
So background, we didn't have a committee structure, and I'm not 100%. It's just a timing thing. Some of the businesses, like we did last year, we did a temporary COVID measure to allow some businesses with, that have attached property or attached space within the ordinance, and we looked over other towns, they're allowed to lease a certain amount of pre-approved space to have outdoor dining. So they use a template of some other towns, and we left it to the approval of the building department and city staff on a case-by-case basis. So every case-by-case basis, and it limits to, it has to touch or adjacent physically to your establishment. It cannot be across the street, it cannot be a block away, it has to be attached to your establishment, and it cannot interfere with pedestrian right-of-way or vehicle right-of-way. Those are just some highlights in here. We kept a low fee, I think it's a hundred bucks, just got to charge something, but they would have to apply through the process. It would, the alderman would be made aware. I plan to treat this just like a block party. If it's in your ward, you're going to get an email right away before anything's approved. So we had to put something together because we're already in June. Some of the businesses have asked for this prior to the election even, so if there's any, we need a motion in a second, then we can have on the question, or we want to amend it. It's something that was asked by some of our business and businesses to do. So is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Farenwald, is there a second?
A second.
So Alderman Rita on the question?
Question?
Alderman Johnson.
Does this have anything to do with, like, the roach cultures or, you know?
No. This has to be attached to a physical eatery establishment that serves food.
Okay.
We put that in there. Has to serve food. Yes, Alderman Farenwald?
I think it's an excellent idea, and I would want to see it probably perfected. My, as I read it, my concern is, there's a lot of language in it, and a lot of it is somewhat vague and open to interpretation, and I'm a little concerned about opening liabilities, if you will. I understand you, so you've modeled it after ordinances, our building folks have looked at it, and that's all good. I just kind of would like to hope, maybe we could talk about it at the next, you know, our first committee meeting next week, just to kind of go.
I'm not opposed. I wanted to get it rolling.
Yeah.
So I have no problem with that. We need a motion to table.
I'll table.
Our motion's made to table. Alderman Farenwald, is there a second? Motion by Alderman Johnson, on the question? This is the table, and I vote with the table, and they vote with not the table. So clerk, do the roll.
Alderman Johnson?
Aye.
Alderman Roll?
Aye.
Alderman Carr?
Aye.
Alderman McGee?
Aye.
Alderman Farenwald?
Aye.
Alderman Rita?
Aye.
Alderman Matoya? Seven ayes, Your Honor.
All right, motion's been to table. It'd be one of the first things we put on our committee of the whole agenda, which I expected. It's something I wanted to get, something for us to look at anyway. So it's something we need to do. And whatever we do, it's going to be, again, case-by-case basis. I'm very adamant on that because Blue Island is not a cookie-cutter town, so everything's case-by-case. So moving on, we have an executive session. I'd like to invite the alderman, elected officials first, and then I'll be calling in the police chief. So just the alderman and elected officials, no legal, no police chief, just the alderman and elected officials. It'll be very brief before I call the police chief in. So.
Do you have information?
Yes.
I've just never been in an executive session where there wasn't some legal advice available.
I don't think we need to right away, but I can call her in with the police chief, if you want.
I would like that.
Okay. So I need a motion to adjourn to executive session. Motion by Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman Carr, on the question? Can I do this all in favor? Is roll call?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Executive session. We'll be back.
Any motion to re-adjourn?
No.
Motion by Alderman Carr, second by Alderman McGee, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, we're back in open session. There's nothing else. Oh, to give an update on what happened in executive session, we discussed employment issues within the police department. That could be as simple as that. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman Farenwald. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Thank you.